Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday evening, August 14th at 7:03 PM. Tonight we are in session with committees, four of them, in preparation for next week's full business meeting where we will be considering ordinances. And between tonight and next Monday night's meeting, there will be a Friday lunch meeting with city council members and President Nellis and some of his administrative staff. Our first meeting committee tonight is the Finance and Personnel Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three items tonight on Finance and Personnel Committee. The first is the Public Defender Contract, which I've been informed, the council does not have to pass any legislation concerning this topic, so there's no real need for discussion.
Okay.
Anyone? Audit?
I don't think there's any legislation. You've already accepted their contract for this year. However, that contract is paid out of the court budget in the general fund, and there will need to be about a $10,000 appropriation to pay this next bill.
Comments, committee? Administration?
Just wondering where we can take that from. Does Court have another fund that we can...
Well, we have looked at people's budgets halfway, at the halfway mark in June and early July, and I have some suggestions. But I told the mayor today I'd like to talk to him first. Sometimes people have little money sitting there, but in their minds and plans, it's spoken for. And so we have, we have looked at some, but I, you know, I'd like to talk to the mayor about it. $10,000 in the general fund isn't huge. The thing is, we don't have it in the unappropriated balance. That has not changed for several months.
Member Pappy?
No.
Okay. Put your hands up.
So, the court budget is very tight. Typically, for that amount, we would just look at other account lines that we could move it around, but it's not there in the court fund. So...
Why is it not there in the court fund?
Well, the contract wasn't budgeted for this increase at midpoint. Debbie and I had a conversation, the mayor and I have, Lisa and I have. It's kind of complicated, the way the Public Defender's contract runs, because their, their budget depends on what the percentage they're subsidized by the state, the reimbursement they get. And the state is on different fiscal year than we are, and by the time they adjust their budget, we aren't signing our contract for the year until mid-year. If you look at that contract, you'll see that it's effective January 1st through the end of the year, but we didn't, the city didn't sign off on it until mid-year, which is typical. It's been like that for many years. And so by then, they realized that their reimbursement had been reduced slightly from the state, so the, the amount has increased. Our budget from the beginning of the year was based on what we paid last year, with a small increase. But they had to increase what they're asking for in their contract for the second half of this year. And we just don't buy, really, $9,000 will probably cover it, but just say 10. And so that's, that's where we are now. We've already made one payment, we make two a year. First payment was just under $60,000. This next one will be almost $75,000, which is a bit of a jump, but I talked to the Commissioner's office today, and they're pretty sure that, that the reimbursement percentage is going to go back up from 40% to 45%, and that our bills cost next year will go down slightly. But we don't know. In the meantime, we have an invoice for $75,000, and we're just short about $9,000 to pay it.
Member Pappy?
So, that was where I was wondering where a lot of this was coming from, because there has been a reduction in the Public Defender costs through the state, again, a state budget cut, I guess.
Exactly.
But I don't know, I'm glad to hear that you spoke to the commissioners, because that was my question, one of my questions, but how do they know that that's going to change? I mean, why do they think it's going to go back up to 45%?
Just because of what they've been told by a representative from the Ohio Public Defender's Office. But we don't know. So, they think it will, but we won't know until next year. We won't be billed again by the, of local commissioners until February or March.
Okay.
By then, we should know. But we don't know that it, it will, but she seemed pretty confident from what she's been told at the state level, but it, it could change.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm just hoping she's right, and it will go back down slowly.
Thank you.
I also, thank, thank you. Next item is the general property tax, accepting amounts of rates set by the Budget Commission. Care to inform us about all this?
I was told it was a standard every year.
Audit?
It is. It is. This is what council has to approve, accept every year for our inside millage rates. I don't think they've changed since I've been in office, and I didn't actually see this come through, but I've been on vacation. I assume it came to my office, it came on up to Debbie to give council. And in the past, as long as I can remember, it's been due October 1st, so I assume that would be the date on this one. Because sometimes we had trouble getting it passed by council in time when recess was August, at least for three meetings. But anyway, it's, it's our, it's our inside millage for the city of Athens and for our portion of Canaan Township. So, I don't know, maybe Debbie can tell if it's changed. I imagine we've been notified that.
Yeah.
Due before, yeah. It's the same. So, it's, it's a procedural thing that council, so you know. That's our percentage of property taxes that we get.
And the idea is, we're, we are, since the city doesn't have a property tax, but we do occupy certain portions of townships that do have a property tax, and they have that to maintain their streets and bridges and roads and so on. But since the city is now maintaining those, those assets, it's only fair that we get reimbursed for some, some of our costs.
Exactly. These properties are all within the city limits, and we are responsible for maintaining infrastructure and other things that's...
Which is what we should do. At the same time, we should get paid for it.
There you go.
Bridges are expensive.
Yes, they are. Beach, you name it.
Madam President?
So, the clerk's notification says that the, the amount that we're anticipating coming in this year is $879,854. And that's Athens Township and Canaan Township combined?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, that's pretty consistent for every year I've, I've seen it. So, it's around $800.
It doesn't go up very much, really. It was probably around $500,000 when I started, I would call it being that amount, but I think it's been over $800 for several years now.
Administration, need to speak to this?
I do not. I just pretty much accept what the rates are set.
All right. Well, yeah, we really don't have much choice about it. And last but not least, appropriations and transfers. What do we have?
We have several items.
Okay.
We've got $3,000 for Athens Police Department. Actually, it's a transfer. $30,000, sorry, $30,000. $7,000 is going to be for, for computers. The other thing is EPW, Engineering Public Works. We need to look at $30,000 for sludge.
More sludge?
More sludge. You know, we're likely to have to, because of the land and the land transfer or loaning of the, the lease agreement, depending on how that turns out with the land itself, we're going to have to go back to belt pressing and then taking, sending it off to landfill, and that cost is, we're going to see a cost increase in that. So, and then the generator. We also need that generator for the, for this building, as well as the law building. In conversations with the auditor earlier today, we kind of thought, we were thinking different things. One, could we possibly take a loan from ourselves? We're the treasurer, Mary Ann McClure, but we felt that, given the, the interest rates that we can get, that we'll go that route instead, because we're looking at $274,000 to get generation for these buildings, but it's desperately needed. You know, every time our server takes a hit because of a power outage, it's not only effort to come in and reboot things, but we run the risk of, of losing a server, which would be even worse, without having backup generation. I did reach out to, I think I sent this to, I know I sent it to Chris Neisler, President of Council, and hopefully it went and got distributed throughout the rest of council. I did reach out to Third Sun and asked Jeff Greenfield what his recommendation on this is to, because of the question that was raised about having green energy driving our backup generation. And he said that at this point in history, that's probably cost prohibitive to do that, plus it wouldn't be prudent during the winter months with the ability to recharge a battery bank if we had a winter hour power outage because of ice or snow or whatever, that it's not the way to go, to do solar backup power generation. He didn't advise it. He said he wouldn't advise that to any municipality when it comes to energy protection, so...
And the thought right now is that the law administration building HVAC system that went out, that they're suffering through next door, was because the system got fried during the last power outage that we had, the planned one a week ago. It seems to be Tuesday morning, and so it's not working.
So, are you looking at gas generation, or...
We've, well, I, I think I provided the quotes for both to city council. To do gas would require two separate gas generators, which would cost about $394,000, as opposed to one diesel backup generator for both buildings, which would be $274,000. So, it's about a $100,000 difference, a $120,000 difference between the two. And my thoughts are this, and I'll share this with council, as I've shared with my staff, is that for the number of times a year, which is more frequently lately, but not long running, I think our longest power outage this year was when the telephone poles went down and the city building was without power. I don't know if the law building, you were out without power, but was it the full three days as well? It was a long time. But anyway, three days, so it'd be three days of diesel generation for power. The second longest this year was a day. We were out for a day. So, when you look that, you know, when I look at it that way across the span of 365, 66 days, diesel is the more prudent way to go, because it's not used that often. But when it is needed, it's needed. It's critical. But we have prices for both.
Okay.
Oh, question?
I would like to point out that at some point in the future, a diesel operating system could be transformed into a biodiesel operation. If biodiesel becomes more centralized and...
I also want to share this with gas, because I think this is important as well. The quote that we got for $394,000 was just for two generators. Likely, we'd have to, we'd have to enlarge our service line coming in, because our service lines currently wouldn't be able to handle the amount of, of gas that's going to, that would be required to run both of these. I, I don't know what the size of our line is to the buildings, but again, likely have to increase the size of gas transmission line.
Member McGee?
Thank you. As you know, I was somewhat skeptical, considering the fact that you had brought this up right after, I believe, Miss Fall had mentioned something about the need for conserving resources, going green, you know, in general, as an environmentalist. My question to you is this, and it's really a series of questions that, it seems to me that you're suddenly saying that we need to have energy for two buildings, and yet we have a crucial area that is basically just the electronics dealing with the websites and such. So, I have two questions. One, could, could those particular sites be moved to the community building, which is actually solar powered, from what I understand? And actually, doesn't it have some sort of backup generator already? So, could we move that over there and save the public this $275,000 and, and maybe avoid having to go through doing the diesel system? And if not, could we at least consider, instead of maintaining two buildings at full function, it seems that we have just a very small amount of the buildings that would actually need covered for electricity? Are there ways to basically shut down certain sections of the buildings? For instance, I don't see any reason why the court, if there's an emergency, if there's a power outage, why the court would have to be in business during that time. They may disagree with me. We certainly move cases quite a bit. But we do have another court system as well, right across the street.
Well, let me, let me share this with you. One, talking with David, there's not enough room over at the community center for putting our servers in there, as well as having to redo a lot of stuff when it comes to the cabling, the whole nine yards. I mean, I, I believe that that would be equally expensive to now relocate completely the servers over to the community center. Yes, it does have a backup generator. It's not solar powered. You know, the, the, the solar that's coming in is minimal into the community center. But, and then I would contend that there's a lot that goes on in this building aside from just the servers and IT. And I would say the same for the law building. You know, the auditor's office is in there. There's the police department, which has its servers. There's, there's a lot going on in these two buildings to sit and, and hamstring us by not having a backup generator, you know, in lieu of having it somewhere else. So, that's my answer to your question.
Audit?
Good questions, but I would like to add something. And the mayor already addressed the server situation in the, in the city hall. However, we have our own servers in our office and in our building. And as far as not having access to anything, and I know exactly what you're saying about Court. I've had discussions and seen what is required for municipal courts for disaster recovery is set forth by the legislature was several years ago. Judge Graham actually had them shut down for a day and not use their computers, and they can do everything by hand. I'd say the rest of us are not set up to do that, like utilities billing or our office. And without electricity, we're basically at a standstill. I know that David does actually want to move the server room and include ours with it, but I, I can't imagine that wouldn't be a huge undertaking and also be costly. So, that's just what I would add to that. We, we do have our own servers in the auditor's office that would, would be without, so it's not just the ones in city hall, as far as the two buildings. I think I was trying to remember everything you said, that I was just going to let you know about. But yeah, Court, Court is an exception as far as being able to operate without electricity. We should maybe all have that kind of disaster recovery plan, but we don't, and they are required by law to do that.
I also would, would add, you know, in the case of significant power outage, you know, the community center becomes a cooling station, warming station, whatever. It becomes a refuge for individuals. I believe this building could be as well, since it's a city building. We have some level of space to where we could accommodate people in time of crisis. The other thing too, just to kind of qualify what the auditor is saying about David Dudding talking about relocating the server, it's, it's putting the backup server somewhere else, which is something that is kind of standard procedure these days when it comes to, to servers, is making sure that your backup server and your regular server aren't co-located in the same place, that you have some level of redundancy. So, so that's what he's referring to with finding a different location, which we've thought of several places, you know, possibly putting it right up the street, or maybe in Arts West or somewhere, but we are looking at that as a backup location, but that's just for backup.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other appropriations or topics?
We're struggling a little bit with some of these power outages and damages that have been done to particular fire department headquarters, a loss of three computers. We are going through our insurance company in attempt to try to have that reimbursed directly to us, because as you heard the auditor say, there's no money to move, but we will be talking this week and looking to see if there's any, but what we can adjust in terms of existing budgets.
I don't know if council was aware of that or not, but...
No.
Headquarters, communications has been struck twice with it in less than 60 days. So, lightning does strike twice in the same place. Unfortunately, it was once, again, David Dudding had gotten communications restored, or best he could, then it was hit again, and it's expensive.
Audit?
I actually was out of the office last week, except for Monday, when I worked and then came to council meeting. But on Wednesday, and Debbie was made aware of this by Laura, the deputy auditor, that we need an appropriation of $32,000 in the court fund, the judge's computer fund for that transfer, the ordinance. Those transfers always get tricky, but to transfer that money from the judge's computer fund to the clerk's computer fund, you have to have an appropriation in place, so you have that money to transfer, then you transfer, then you reappropriate it in the other fund to spend. And we forgot that first step, so we need this $32,000 appropriation. This is just, if you want to go back and look at 08817 from last Monday. And so we forgot that beginning, so we can't do the transfer because we don't, there's no appropriation in that account. So, we need, just need that cleaned up.
Make a amendment to that. Go back to the first reading.
No, it's already been stopped, too. So, we'll just be amending.
Okay, right. Okay. All righty, well, I guess that's it.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Transportation Committee, and Councilmember Pappy is chairing that.
Thank you. Athens Public Transit, we do have somebody here representing Athens Public Transit tonight, Michael Lockman. Administration, would you like to update us on the university courtyard service? And Michael, if you want to come to the podium, I don't know if, if you have appropriate information as well. Want to go ahead?
Yes, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
So, what I can tell you, the university courtyard shuttle service is a service for that apartment complex. It's been run historically, in far history, it was run by the city of Athens for a period of time in the, in the 2000s. And more recently, it's been run by Ohio University. And due to some changes they've made with their internal procedures with transportation and parking, they are no longer going to be running that service. And they reached out to us, the possibility that we might take that contract on. As most of you know, we already use third-party contracting and run, some of the codes run apartment complex service. And so this is going to be a similar contract. Been talking all summer with the corporate leadership of courtyard and the local manager, and I think we're within a day or so of that consigned contract. Now, to do this, we need an additional bus in our fleet. And after some negotiations with Ohio University Transportation, the shuttle bus that they've been using to run that service is available for us to purchase. The tricky part about purchasing that bus is that HAPCAP currently has some money in a capital replacement fund that has been collected over the years from contracts. This is something that the State Department of Transportation has allowed us to put together. So, there is some money there to put towards the purchase, and we intend to capture the entire cost of the bus through the courtyard contract. However, that's only going to happen over time. So, what we're working on right now is getting a purchase contract in place that allows for that, that purchase price to be reimbursed to the city every time. And also, we need to get an ordinance on books to approve the purchase of the vehicle and also to accept it as capital asset. So, that is the business at hand with that, and it's fairly urgent business, because the courtyard contract, assuming that all goes well in its sign, is going to start in fall semester, so we have two weeks.
So, Michael, the cost and the age of this vehicle that we are getting ready to...
$38,000?
$38,000, 72,000 miles roughly on it, and it's 2014.
Okay. That sort of seems like a reasonable price. Sounds like it to me. Any, any other council members want to speak to this? Member McGee?
I, I just wondered the terms of the contract, if you could explain to us. You're being reimbursed by the apartment complex, is that correct?
That's correct. And this is what we refer to as a fully allocated cost contract, so it's, it's net zero to the, the city of Athens and to the transit system. We take these kinds of contracts on, they're open-door contracts, the general public is able to provide the service. That's an important point. We must do that. And then the advantage that we get from it is that having contracts that are bringing in local money improve our local matching position. So, most federal funding for operations is done on a matching basis. They will provide up to 50% of what you were able to generate locally. So, having these types of contracts in our portfolio that we're, we're managing and running actually improves our ability to play for federal transportation.
Member Fall?
Well, one of the questions was answered. Thank you, Patrick. I just want to say thank you also for being, you know, having the ability to take on a contract like this. I always worry about, like, overwhelming the capital assets that you have, or the people assets, and how will that be affected by this contract? Is there going to be new people being employed, or...
We are hiring additional staff.
Okay. So, that will be a city driver?
Was there a contract into the HAPCAP?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Arian?
Thanks for being here tonight. I have two questions. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the reasoning that university pulled out of this route? I'm not sure it's...
Sure. Yeah, I can provide a little more detail. It has to do with federal charter regulations and some of the inspection and insurance requirements around that. So, for, my understanding is that for a state university, they have to meet an increasingly high bar to take on that type of third-party service contract. And transportation and parking and their legal representation looked at it and sometime in the past year decided that it was no longer to their advantage. And you may know, they recently divested from that property, they, they had a stake in it, and so I think that was another reason they decided to change.
And it was mentioned earlier that this sounded like a reasonable cost for the vehicle. Would you agree with that, that this would be...
I would. I did a national price study, and we were able to match the model at several dealers, and yeah, it's a very fair price.
I do have one more question. That's okay. How much do you think this will increase your ridership?
I might have to get back to that. Sorry.
Member McGee?
Thank you. And I, I'd like to say that I am fully supportive of this move. I, I think it's a great idea. I do have a question, though. I, I noticed on the schedule of the bus routes that I believe it ends at 9 o'clock. Is that about right?
Currently, we have two lines that run until around 10 o'clock, and the rest of them, at off 15, 7:00 and 8:00 generally.
Okay. And I, I had raised the question at the last meeting simply because some citizens have asked me to push for extended hours for the citizens of Athens, who tend to go up to the bars late at night and, and want transportation afterwards, and I... to the bars late at night and, and want transportation afterwards, and I, I just, I understand that's not part of his plan, but I, I surely hope it's something that you will consider because I think it's essential for both the safety of the citizens and the other drivers, and in general, I think it gives Athens a much better reputation if we do provide extended, extensive public transportation that would be used in this kind of manner. So again, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, and I heartily agree, I think that's something that I do frequently is that extended hours.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments, Administration?
Just because there's a time urgency, as Michael has explained, you know, it's two weeks to take on this particular, to get this contract in place, or we're likely to
Look at suspension.
Suspend, and possibly add an emergency clause and suspend in order to get this through.
Okay.
It's just, yeah, it's, it's tight.
Okay. And we do want to continue with our sustainability efforts to move people around the city and the campus, so we want to keep that bus line going.
My only other question was about, the deputy auditor indicated some inquiry about how they pay and how we do that, but I think we can work that out this week and have that resolved.
Okay. All right.
Stay where you are, Mike.
Yep. Should we, is the vehicle disposal have to do with buses, or should we look at, is it buses? All right. So next on the agenda is the vehicle disposal for Athens Public Transit. And, Michael, do you want to speak to that as well? Thank you.
So this is a disposal of our bus number fifty-four seventy-five. It was purchased in 2010 with American Recovery and Reinvestment Act money, and it is now at about one hundred and seventy-five thousand miles. State standard is two hundred thousand miles, but it lost its transmission in midsummer, and so we did a life cycle cost analysis, and it is not good. So it's the last small piece of vehicle, which is an interesting note, but it's, it's fine, and I don't know that there's anything too complicated about it, it will be disposing like a, an auction.
We're familiar with that. We do recover some cost.
Quite a bit, actually.
Yeah.
Especially the buses.
Yeah. Any questions from council, comments? No? Okay. Athens Public Transit auction vehicles, Mr. Lockman?
This is, at the other end of the vehicle's lifecycle for us, we've recently been having much higher ridership as a result, I think mostly of the HAPCAP test program, which is now in its second year. And it's gotten to the point, and this is a happy problem, but I commute three to four times a day to work on the bus, and I had my first time where I was on a bus that was standing room only, and I was one of several standees. And while that's not a problem right now, that's something where if we continue on our current trajectory, we could get into a situation which on our highest productivity routes, we could wind up having more passengers than we have capacity for on our current buses. So one thing that we've started to look at is the possibility that the need arose to purchase a used heavy transit bus, or several, at a government auction. This is a class of vehicle that's typically disposed of after twelve years' life. Unlike our lighter transit vehicles, like the one I was just talking about, is disposing of, this is a vehicle that, after its federal useful life, still often has a fair amount of useful life in it if it's properly taken care of. So currently, right now, we have three in this category that we use for some at service, one of those is over eight hundred thousand miles at this point. So the thinking is, we would like to be in a position that if an auction came along with one bus or several in favorable condition, that we could bid on that auction and possibly get ourselves some vehicles in the fleet that would be higher capacity. At this time, it's not a project that would involve federal money. However, I just spoke with the ODOT representative in Columbus at a vehicle input meeting this morning, and she suggested that that might be something that could be available in the future, but we first have to get through the procedural hurdles of what do we need to do legally and legislatively to be ready to make that kind of auction purchase. I think one thing that's important for you all to know is the price range of these auctions. So I did a survey with govdeals.com, which is a popular outlet, and the low end was around thirty-seven hundred dollars, the high end was around fifteen thousand five hundred. So if you're talking three vehicles, which I think is the maximum that we would purchase at once, you're looking at a sum that is under the fifty thousand dollar competitive state and middle higher purchase limit.
So I have a couple of questions. A, if we purchase these, where would we park them? Where would we store them? Because I think we have tight space for that. But secondly, is there anything administratively or legislatively that we do that's similar to this, so we know legislatively how to move forward? I, I'm not recalling anything, but, but I don't know everything. The clerk says no, I don't know.
Not really, other than when you authorize disposal, you authorize it through online bids, auctions, so, I mean, it's, you know, or donation.
Kind of reverse order.
So I'm just throwing that out.
But this is something that we would have to have money already appropriated for.
Correct, given, as Michael was mentioning, I mean, I went to, and I encourage council to this, too, go to, you know, govdeals.com and look at what they've got, you can, what you need to do, you need to click on buses and, buses and vans, I think, is what it says, something like that, and I went to it, and Michael's right, the, not that you were wrong, but it was, I saw the same things in terms of the, the distribution, in terms of costs, and in conversations with Michael, he's actually identified in the past, had identified a couple buses that were very reasonably priced and also had been well-maintained and inspected. You had to, there's a location you can go to, to have them, where there's inspection documentation
Yeah.
With the buses themselves. But yes, I mean, it would, since it's such a short window, it's, it's kind of like going on eBay, you've got thirty days to sit and try and make a purchase, and so it's, it's figuring out a path forward to allow Michael, when the need arises in looking at some of these buses, to be able to rapidly go through and, and make a well-educated purchase of a bus if it's available.
So as an auditor, that's kind of a bit of an open account there, open account line, I mean, I don't know. What, what's your commentary?
I would compare it to when we're budgeting and the police department says they need a new vehicle the next year, so we stick thirty-eight thousand in their budget. They haven't picked it out, made any promises to buy, but we put the money in there so when they're ready to go out and make a decision, the money is there for them to purchase.
Okay.
As Debbie said, you know, the way we operate is the money should be in place before you make a promise to purchase.
President Isley?
Given the timeliness of trying to get a bus probably sooner than later, I wonder if we can move the legislation, so it sounds like the legislation to authorize first, but then an appropriation, do you want to be moving an appropriation through rather than waiting another six-week cycle? I don't know.
So authorization and appropriation of the same legislation?
Well, no.
No, we can't do that.
It would be authorization to authorize HAPCAP to enter, to be able to enter into the auction, but then there would be another factor of, just like we appropriate different items, like for the generator and the sludge, would we be wanting to move forward with the money for the appropriating for the buses?
Let me, if I may, is there an urgency with, with what your request is with this? I mean, is there a need now to do this, or is this something that could be budgeted for, for 2018?
Are you concerned with fall semester?
I'm a little concerned with fall semester.
That's what I
It's not better weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
So part of our decision is going to be whether we have money there that we can tie up. And then, I should probably know this, but when we entered into a contract with the AS for purchases, is that through council, or is that a sort of a safety director contract?
Yeah, historical council document we found that authorized that, it was just, there were few years that was non-renewed, but we, we renew it now every year.
Okay, so it, I, I believe President Isley would be correct, that we could authorize this type of purchase, it's a government website, right? We said our auction site? So it would be similar to that, and then the money thing would be something different, and we just have to find out where we can admit that.
So you don't have an idea off the top of your head where we would get that money?
Not in transportation, but right now.
Administration, any ideas on fund lines?
We, we're starting to whittle away at the capital improvements, that's every time, so, but that's something we'll talk
It has to do with streets, you know?
Well, I guess before we brought legislation forward, I would kind of like to know where we were going to get the money.
We'll, we'll work with the auditor this week to determine.
All right.
But, Michael, could it go through three readings in thirty days, or is it, could it go through suspension and then thirty days? I'm just throwing things out there.
I think three readings is fine.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah, because I, that's important for me, too, I was trying to get, trying to understand what is urgent, what isn't, so we know that the contract is urgent, and that
Well, the need sounds like it's urgent. I guess we need to establish that there's, the need is there, which is what you're saying, and then everything moves forward from there. And I think it would give us a better time to see where the monies are going to come from, too, that would make me more comfortable than a suspension or anything else.
Other than, you know, essentially, we're pushing it out almost to November with a full three reading and thirty-day, so we'll work with the auditor, just see where we can locate money this week and then bring something forward.
Transportation Committee folks, any comments or comfort level, or? Member Cosse?
Yes, thank you. You know, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, I, I'm kind of curious to see what, what the numbers are for the fall semester. You know, if you're, if you're wildly successful, then, then we know we're going in the right direction, so I, I like, I like, I'd rather see the, the need there before we, before we jump.
Member Smedley?
I have one other question, and I'm probably stating the obvious, but I imagine you're looking at these auction vehicles because they're cost savings, as opposed to just buying a new vehicle. Is there any concern that we'd be investing in something that wouldn't last very long? Or is it just kind of weighing the pros and cons of what we need now versus what we can afford and that kind of thing?
It's the latter, and then to share what one of these costs that's, that's the spread out.
So I guess one of the questions that just came up, Mr. Lockman, is that would they be retrofitted like the rest of our city buses to carry bikes and whatnot?
Yes.
We would just
And in fact, many of these are coming from city transit fleets that already have a bike mandate
Okay.
And they come with racks.
All right. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. I think we don't need Mr. Lockman any longer?
No, I was just going to mention real quick that their gross revenue is one hundred and forty-one thousand a year, or is that revenue and expenses combined?
That, that would be revenue and/or expenses.
And/or, yeah.
As a fully allocated cost contract, they're one of the same provisions, but that is the correct.
And I would just let council know, the advisory group transportation meets every two months, and so those statistics and those numbers we receive on a, every other month we received updated numbers, so we're pretty up to date on that. Okay, thank you. Halloween twenty-seven, Mr. Thompson is here. Twenty-seventeen, that is. So we need to discuss our general list of ordinances for street closing noise and vending, and I assume you'll bring us up to speed on the plans for this year.
Sure. Fairly simple, that'll be the same as what we did last year, so of, what we're planning on, excuse me, streets will close, let me pull this up real quick, at the Valero, so from state, excuse me, Court Street, from state to Carpenter, closes at ten a.m., so we can do the stage down by Verone's, Verone's courtside area, and then the whole street will close at one p.m., like we've done in the past, because we'll put the South Stage up after that time. So, Stages will both end at twelve-thirty like we did last year, with music starting at six p.m. on the North Stage, and then six-thirty on the South Stage. So we're going to use the Honey for the Heart Parade as our normal start for everything, so they'll start down at the North Stage, as soon as they get up to the South Stage, music will start around six-thirty, so.
Okay. How did things work with that time last year, twelve-thirty?
It was good. We didn't really have any issues, I was, you know, concerned about it, the South Stage ending earlier, with people getting a little rowdy and wanting to go, but they seemed to disperse okay, so it worked out well, so we didn't really have any issues, but I was clear up. You guys hear anything? Any tip or anything?
No. I, Administration, how did things go last year that, as far as you can remember?
It went well, as well as, yeah, Halloween event can go, it was expensive, but it was
What do you mean it was expensive?
Well, the amount of money that we end up having to put in when it comes to overtime and staffing, it's
Horrison.
That, we, we deal with that every year.
Do you remember what the cost was last year, the total?
Off the top of my head, for that singular event, I don't.
But it is approximately sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
Total, that's, that's
That's for the city, and then another sixty-five to seventy thousand for the university. Yeah. I, I do have one comment, please, or just a question. We were at the Honey for the Heart Parade, which is a grand event, and really enjoyed it, lots of families there, but the only thing that I noticed is, is the Honey for the Heart Parade begins, they're doing the sound check on the stage, and so just a, just a side comment, that if there's a way for them to wait on the sound check until
Okay.
The band is through, it probably just didn't even occur to people
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I speak with Patty each year, because I'm usually at the South Stage, I'll talk to John, maybe get to the North Stage. We could see, I mean, the other thing is, you know, we have our strict schedule, so I don't know if they start a little later as well, because, you know, we try and time it up so it works out, but, you know, they're, they have so many people have to get there, so they may start earlier, but we can definitely see if they can do that, because we think it's a great event, I mean, it just kind of happened naturally, and, you know, if you haven't seen it, you have to go see it. There's videos online at Athens Halloween, but it's, it's like Mardi Gras, you know, without the beats and stuff, it's really nice, so.
I have spoken to several merchants who, who had a little bit of a complaint, they're restaurant owners, and they indicated that some of their business actually drops off because the vendors aren't permitted to sell so early. I don't recall what time they're permitted to sell, but I, I did want to express, I was concerned that actually, that people who should be benefiting from a local festival like this are actually maybe losing business, so if anything could be done to improve their
Yeah, with the, with the vending, that starts at the earliest one p.m., because the only vending area we had was down by College Gate, so, so anything before that, because they have to get set up there, and I don't, I'm trying to recall the food, most of, most of them were, I'm trying to think, there was a, they weren't food, they were merchants and things like that, so, but, you know, I can also be speaking at the Uber meeting as well, so if they have questions about that, you know.
These, these were definitely restaurant owners, so. Thank you.
To that issue, one of the things that was different last year in comparison to previous years was, was relocating where the vendors were, they, they migrated down onto further east on East Eight Street, so on the east side of Court Street, where in the past they had been on the, the west side, and they were right there in front of several dining establishments, but anywhere you look at it, there's going to be dining establishments, but I, I don't, I don't block it, your comment, I think that that, I've often thought about that, too, the, the impact of some of the vending on some of our restaurants.
And these are outside vendors or are normal vendors for Athens?
You know, these are, I think it's a mix, I think it's more largely outside vendors, the bigger carnival vendors.
Oh.
the bigger carnival vendors that come in. There are some from inside the city of Athens that are also vending.
Yeah, it's from what I've seen. Like I said, I'm on the south side of the street, so I don't see all of it. But it's mostly outside. A lot of the locals don't want to deal with the larger crowd and things like that.
Okay.
One other point, as far as parking, there always seems to be a real problem. I know the university goes through a period of cracking down on parking. I just wondered whether there would be any opportunity to explore having parking not merely at the fairgrounds, but even further out at where they hold the number fest, and maybe have some buses that would carry people into town so we don't have that parking problem, you know? I'm not sure who to communicate it with.
Yeah, no, that's, that is a great idea. I mean, you know, it would be, it would take some funding, advertising as well. And a lot of people are old school, so they expect, I'm going to park it at the middle school and things like that. So they don't realize, you know, the fairgrounds. But I think that's a great idea, you know, because there is a lot of space, barring we have any rain or anything like that. If it's muddy, there is a pit out there. But they have plenty of space, and it's unused as far as I know during Halloween, so, you know.
Service Safety Director, aren't you on the, are you on the planning committee?
For Halloween?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Well, so, can you, that's what I thought. Can you talk to us about just some of the other planning that people may not be aware of? I mean, you do talk parking.
We do talk parking. We talk transit. Is Michael still in the house? He might have left.
No.
But they run a special Halloween shuttle from the fairgrounds. Fairgrounds has never been completely full. The Agricultural Society, the board, they sell, as does the middle school and some other places sell for that. But that does bring me to another point, and I believe we can discuss it since Halloween 2017. If for the last decade that I've been up here, a previous Service Safety Director instituted charging of parking garage. And I had a council member who inquired about this after Halloween last year, because you had a local citizen who wanted to come up and go to the early movie. And we're only given the choices of, you know, $15 for a night, $25 for the weekend. So parking garage rates would also need to be suspended in a different ordinance. I do not have the narrative with me this evening, but the police chief feels that it's imperative to retain control of that structure during this time of that weekend. It's also where we park other assistance vehicles.
Seems like a safety, a super safety issue to me, to have control of our parking garage. Member Butler?
I was just going to ask for clarification or specifics on what that means.
Then that would allow what has been practiced, at least for a decade, if not longer. I don't have the history prior to 2007.
What you're saying is we've never really put that in the ordinance?
That's my understanding.
You'd like to formalize that?
According to, we do not have the authority under the Athens City Code, council does, for changing the rates.
Okay. And what would we say to that person, just like a restaurant owner who wants to come and enjoy a movie, but can't really park, doesn't want to pay $15 to park?
I have not had, obviously, I'm not providing a very good response, other than the fact that due to that intensity of that weekend and what we have, the number of outsiders and the outside agencies assisting with this, we feel that we need to have total control of the parking garage.
Makes sense.
And I think that's where our government channel, our government channel can help us. Start publicizing now, start talking about it, announcing it with every reading of the ordinance. Maybe there's something that we can, I mean, they're going to need to park on Stimson and walk, probably, if they can, or have somebody, you know, drop them off to the backside of a road that is open if they would need, you know, because of mobility issues to be able to be closer. But I think with enough advanced preparation, we can get some information.
Or bike, or use public transport.
Or choose a different night to go to the movie.
Yeah.
Just, I'm trying to get it clear in my head. So you're saying that you would like to have control of the parking garage and charge a fee of $15 for 24 hours?
I'm pulling it from memory here, and I believe it's usually $15 for Friday, or you would also, you could purchase the $25 for the weekend, which Friday, Saturday. The vehicles cannot re-enter.
Okay, so who is, who is, who's taking the fee?
We have parking enforcement.
There would be someone stationed there 24 hours?
They are stationed there.
Once it's full. I assume it fills up.
I, yeah. Because the way it ends is we, and the we morning of Sunday morning, then the manning ends essentially, but we have patrol on duty.
Okay, so you set up a booth or something at the gate?
They sit there on a stool.
And I think a lot of people end up sleeping in their cars.
No.
I don't know. I've been on cleanup duty Sunday morning, so, I mean, whatever. So again, a reason for safety and control, is my opinion.
I understand. Just one that cleared.
And maybe a hotel motel, thanks.
Okay.
Have a tax and sol.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Any other questions? I think the point was made again, that there is a, it is a great event, but there is a considerable cost to the community. So we, how many years now?
This will be 43.
So.
It's got some history behind it.
Yeah, it's got some history. All right.
And briefly, if I may, again, I want to thank...
It wasn't sanctioned for 43 years.
Right.
As far as I'm, Halloween's been going on for 43 years. Whether or not, you know, the Fox Planet says official, that's how we go about it, so.
Yeah, and I just briefly wanted to thank the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee. Again, it's a great collaborative effort between city and university, the committee itself, to make this safe and responsible, make sure everyone's okay. Thank you to your work again, and thank you to Jonathan for his efforts in the past.
Yeah, we love it. I mean, we love it. It's a lot of work, but it's a great event, and it's been changing. And that's why we're trying to keep working. One of the nice things about last year is we saved some money, because we did cut back. You know, it is a lot of money, but it was cheaper than the year before, because we ended an hour earlier, you know? So one of the things I will stress this again, would love to use the street for something other than music during the day. We've had some people reach out. They wanted to do a mile run from the Armory to Baker, but that wouldn't really work, because we're setting up the stages. But, you know, some groups have reached out about using the street in a, you know, a way other than it's being used right now. And I think that's going to happen next few years. Something's going to come out that's going to be, oh, wow, I never thought of that, you know? So. And also, I want to mention, we're working on Saturday, October 27th for 2018. I know we usually come in here and request a street closure, but if you guys want to write that down, that's what we're looking for. I know we have to request the street closure and everything like that, but that's what next year will be. A lot of people plan around Halloween. That's what we're hoping to do next year, so.
Can you repeat that, please?
Twenty seven, twenty seven.
Twenty seven. So it's essentially the same weekend for 2018, like that Saturday. A lot of people wonder if it's going to be the week before. That's what we're looking for for 2018.
Just remind us again, one more time, what is the date for this year?
Saturday, October 28th, 2017.
All right. Okay, any, member McGee?
Just a real quick comment. I suggest you look at the website for the Edinburgh Fringe Festival for some alternatives to Halloween, that what some community groups could do with the street before the takeover, so.
Okay, right ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that. I appreciate that you are looking for other things to do. I think that Honey for a Heart, Honey for the Heart has been huge for bringing families out on an event that typically they steer clear of. I'm interested, I'm really intrigued by someone to go see a movie during that time, but that's a whole different story. So I support that if the notion is family-friendly things earlier in the day that could bring people out to enjoy when the street is already closed down. And I should share, too, that I'm not going to disclose anything, but, you know, we've really been brainstorming safety features that we're building into this event, given some of the global climate and issues that we've observed, that we've all heard about. So we're constantly looking at different ways to do business in this rather large, the city's largest event. So and thank you, Brandon, for all the work that you've put into this for all the years, and Jonathan Holmberg and everyone else, and city staff for being involved in all the pre-planning. The pre-planning takes months. You know, pre-planning starts eight months out, if I'm not mistaken.
It's like having a baby. My experience since being on council is that that has improved, at least during the time that I've been here, too. There's more communication, earlier advance, all those kinds of things. So appreciate your efforts. All right, thank you. Okay, the ever, never-ending East State Street project ordinances. We have a agreement that needs to be revised, that is required by the state. And I don't believe, I probably have an email on it, but I'll let you guys kind of update everyone.
This for the LPA, which is the Local Let Project Agreement. And again, it is an amendment to that project. It's 100, or $71,446 for this project. ODOT is covering that cost. This is to put cameras with the 33 project, East State Street project, right near there. We did ask whether there could be some level of our being able to control the camera, or to jump on and control it. And ODOT said, no, you can, you can stream it and look at it, but we can't sit there and zoom and pan and do any of those things with the cameras. So. And this is, this is a project that ODOT has been doing statewide, you know, on all the state highway system. You see cameras all over the place. And this will be the first camera that's in the southeast corridor of 33. There isn't, nothing like this exists. So.
When you say southeast corridor, where do you mean?
I mean, from, well, I don't know if Lancaster has anything. Likely, they may, I don't know, but further south.
On 33?
On 33.
Yeah, okay. Okay, member Paul?
I'm just wondering what the general purpose ODOT puts forward for these cameras? And are these the ones that are streamed? When you go to their website to check updates on streets or weather?
I believe so. One of the things that the city engineer was telling us earlier today is, yeah, you go to Columbus, and you can go up there and see the cameras, view the cameras anywhere in the state. So this will be like that as well, as I understand it.
So sometimes it's for weather, sometimes it's for traffic.
Or just Big Brother looking at the city back.
And that is creepy. This day and age.
Welcome to London.
We will need to...
Or willing.
Either suspend or put an emergency clause, but we need to get this through quickly.
So just as a, on the other side of the coin, if this council decided they didn't want those cameras, what would ODOT say?
That would be interesting.
I'm just...
We work so closely with ODOT.
We do.
And as you know, Athens is the only city in District 10 that is allowed to do these local let projects. They've requested that we bid this with our project. They'll fund it 100%. I personally would not like to damage that relationship. It's a closed-circuit camera system that they have statewide. I actually asked the question. I said, who would have the ability to read the license plates? It's not. It's not a license plate reader, so.
I think the more information along those lines would probably help people feel more comfortable with this. You know, I think that...
I feel comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And if we're at a critical time, about to go to bid to be able to incorporate that, that's why I would ask. But we'll work on getting you information like that this week.
So it would need to be suspended?
It will.
So comfort level in seven days, folks, in a week. So any information you can share would probably be better for the vote come Monday.
Because I already know, people are already emailing about this.
Member Costas?
And do they have an exact location where these cameras are going, or is it just along the 33 corridor?
I don't know the actual location of this particular...
He indicated somewhere around the ramp, because we're doing ramp reconfiguration with this project.
Right.
And I just would have to say again, that if the general public should not feel that they have anonymity when they're out in the general public realm. I've faced the same questioning on Court Streets, Court Street cameras, so.
Member Costas?
And I can see the value here to measure the volume of traffic and to see how these systems are working, and really kind of monitoring what it's doing at 5:30 versus 7:00 or 8:00 at night. So, I mean, for me, you know, I'm fine with that.
And I would just comment, this has been a long-term planning project, and ODOT District 10 initially was discussing a more maybe progressive way to move traffic with the diverging diamond, diverging whatever. And then the state up in Columbus decided that they did not like that project. So they brought it down to what is being currently configured. So maybe by collecting data, you know, I can only see traffic continuing to increase, so maybe that is data that will be well-served for later on down the road.
I concur with the Service Safety Director in terms of the relationship that we have with District 10, the relationship that we have with ODOT in general. When we look at all the transportation alternative fundings that we've gotten, we're in the queue for the next three years for some pretty major projects. And the last thing I think we want to do is to really kind of paint ourselves with our own black eye moving forward with this. So again, these are, they're traffic flow cameras. They're all over the state.
Right. I think, though, what the Service Safety Director said, to reemphasize that these cameras are for X, Y, and Z. And I would like that just to be put forward a little more clearly for people.
We can get you that information.
Right. And, you know, the idea that it's not for reading license plates and such. But I think that every time we bring up cameras, it's a time to educate people about why there are those sort of things. And, you know, maybe provide the website that other cameras are on for people.
Sure.
Just to be able to be comfortable.
Okay, any other comments? All right. Final item is the, that I believe is the final item, the ODOT Guard Rail Project. And I unfortunately have no information on that.
This is a project.
Thank you.
Do you have it now?
I do.
This is the US 50 Near Blackburn Road Guard Rail replacement, looking at having this completed in October of this year.
Yeah, they would like the legislation back by then. It's for 2018 project, no appropriation, authorization, only auditor it's on, their dime.
So is this on the side of where the hotel is, the motel? Is that the guard rail, that guard rail, or is this, it's...
Is this a divider through the center of the highway?
2.6 miles in length, ending .21 miles east of Blackburn Road. So I'm thinking as you go around the curve.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, on 33.
On 33.
Yeah, what you said is, yeah, on 50.
Okay. All right, any questions? They're paying 100% of the cost.
Do we have a diagram or architectural rendering?
We didn't receive one, but...
No, they're not with the information that was provided.
We can ask for it. I'm assuming it's just a standard guard rail that's going in.
Is this new or is replacing?
Replacement.
Replacement.
Oh.
We'll get you a map.
So it wouldn't be a senate matter.
Okay, any other comments, concerns?
I guess, why, why is it being replaced?
I would say it's probably through regular maintenance, but it seems a pretty narrow...
Especially there.
It probably has some weak points in it, because I'm sure that it's been run into for a couple times.
Probably.
Probably. How many times can you run into a guardrail?
ODOT doesn't indicate the reason for the replace.
Doesn't look like that.
And did I hear correctly, they were gonna, it was, they were gonna cover the cost?
They are.
We'll ask the question.
They just need authorization from the city, since it's in the city.
Okay. Thank you, clerk. And transportation is complete.
All right, we'll move on to City and Safety Services Committee with Councilmember Butler chairing.
Thank you, President Nisley. We have four items this evening: traffic boxes, art bench project, water tap, and the county sewer corridor. I will likely lean on some of my colleagues from council, as well as the mayor's office and a few of our members in the audience to help me with this evening's agenda. First, beginning with the traffic boxes. If you recall, the city acknowledged and sent out an RFP June 20th, and that was acknowledging that the Athens Municipal Arts Commission is seeking up the 10 art designs to be applied onto vinyl wraps, which would cover traffic control boxes within the city of Athens. This, as you recall, would be a continuation of the thriving essence, excuse me, essence of Athens and our mission that council has supported to continue to embrace projects within the city limits that, that are within the essence of Athens. So this is specific to the traffic boxes. The Public Works Director and Municipal Arts Commission and the city administration had identified a number of boxes around town that would be appropriate for this. We've already installed a number with the first go-around. This would be the second go-around. The theme would be to, again, be purely Athens, or to acknowledge sort of an Athens-esque message. That was the message encouraged from the Municipal Arts Commission. We do have a presentation of some of the work this evening, as well as the Municipal Arts Commission newly, newly minted member, Ms. Kelly Lawrence is here too, whether, whether we have any questions for her or any other guidance. I do believe she was part of the process, correct? And if you want to speak at the podium, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Briefly, the wraps will be removed after three to five years, depending on their condition. Also discretion of the city administration, city in general, if they need to be removed. And a $500 honorarium is awarded for each design. Ms. Lawrence, if anything else?
Well, it was a blind jury. I was one of the jury, jury members. And we reviewed over 120 different designs that were submitted, and we chose 10 designs to, to put on the boxes and for alternates if those don't work out. We tried to choose things that had to do with Athens in some way, or, or we felt were, that would look really nice on these boxes, and very unique.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that these images right now will also be playing in TV land, that we are witnessing here on screen within council chambers. So we're running through the 10 images that have been picked, and Ms. Lawrence was helping answer questions and comments. Any questions at the moment?
I, my.
Thank you, Councilmember Pat. And we can continue to leave these rolling.
Yeah. My question has to do with how they're maintaining the ones that we put up a year or so ago. How are, are they in pretty good shape? How, when they need to take stickers off that people have put on, is that ruining the, the surface? How, you know, I'm just wondering.
Sure. I mean, I can speak to that personally. There's one, one box wrap in particular where I find myself peeling off stickers on it on occasion. But I think by and large, the traffic box wraps that, that are out there, of the 10, you know, I'd say the vast majority aren't being tagged with stickers or whatever.
And graffiti, that was another reason.
I have not seen one graffiti.
Yeah.
Now, some of you may have, but I've not seen that, which is a vast improvement over what is out there. One has been tagged.
Got it cleaned up right off?
And it comes right off. The stickers, if you get to them early, the stickers come off quickly as well. But, you know, the one that's down there by, on the corner of Court Street and President Street, that was the one that used to have all kinds of signage hanging all over it. And that doesn't happen. That's the one where I find stickers on occasion and peel them off.
And are most of these signed? I mean, I would hope the artists would sign them, so, not sure.
Actually, no, most of them aren't signed, mainly because it was a blind jury, so they didn't want to have any identification of the wrong pieces.
As this continues, though, I mean, it's a great question. As these continue, we're mapping where these are and the artist who has produced them, and hopefully, you know, if not with this round, after the round three, when all 30 of them have wraps on them, that we could publish something and put it out there to where someone could do a traffic box art wrap walk or something.
It's great.
There, yeah, these are all over the place. As you know, there's one at the intersection of 56 and 682. So a traffic box wrap could be, walk could be extensive as to where you're gonna go.
Unforgettable piece of art.
Don't you like that one? My children really like it, but, yeah. But it's art, so.
Yes. Are they moving out East State now? Is, are we trying?
I don't know which 10 are on target.
Yeah, they
That's still part of the process, right.
Okay.
The city engineer, because of the work that's going to be done on East State Street, we believe we will have wraps on East State Street, but it's a matter of timing.
Councilmember Kostas, do you also have a question?
I was, I was just gonna ask where, where they were gonna go, and it sounds like that's already been answered.
Thank you.
But I will, I will mention that, and this is just a point, that usually when you do add, add this type of element to, to, to the public, you do find that you do get less vandalism, you know, in, in that situation. So I would think that it's probably better than what it has been.
Thank you. Councilmember Gee?
Thank you, Councilmember Butler. I just wanted to say, I really like the fact that these projects show Athens. They include items of Athens and parts of Athens. And I think it's wonderful that we actually have a project that we're putting out to tourists and people who are coming here that actually reswept Athens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
I just want to mention one more thing about these wraps, the popularity of them, is that we've heard from some of our police officers, when they're controlling the lights at near Petion Stadium, at the ridges wrap that's on that particular traffic box, or two of them actually, that they often get asked by passersby, can you please take a photo of me with whomever in front of this wrap? They like them that much. There's, you know, people are doing selfies next to our boxes, our traffic control, which otherwise no one would ever do that.
Right.
It looks like a GE refrigerator when they don't have these wraps on them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Moving on, we have a presentation this evening too. We have a number of members present from an art bench project. I believe Ms. Donna Goodman, Marcia Schubert, Chris Paul, Roxanne, Roxanne Groff, Kerry Gunter Seymour, Barbara Flowers, and Susan Westendorf are here this evening. The discussion regarding an art bench has been, something that has been on their mind, and, and I do believe they are accompanied with a visual presentation this evening too, which should be accessible on that computer. So if you're able to address us from the podium too, and if you need any help too, we can holler at the studio to get this up for, for you. Thank you.
Hi, Donna Goodman. I'm with the Art Bench Group. Most of you, I think, know me. Probably most people recognize me as a board member of the Athens Conservancy. And I'm just gonna give a real quick intro of what the Art Bench Group is, and then I'm gonna hand it over to our artists, and then give the actual PowerPoint-y kind of thing. So, the Art Bench Group sprang out of the Athens Conservancy's desire to develop an art and poetry trail on one of our preserves. And that actually was an idea that Chris Paul came up with, your fellow council member. We convened a small group of board members and citizens, residents of Athens County, to see if we could come up with a suitable place for that. And we were not able to do that. We just couldn't find what we thought was the perfect place. So in our discussions, we sort of landed on the idea of, well, how about putting some interesting art benches in special places on the Hawk Hocking Bike Trail, and in areas where maybe, maybe people could sort of rest and renew, and, and areas that were interesting and that didn't exactly have benches at this time. So, the group continued to meet totally independently of the Athens Conservancy, and it is independent of the Athens Conservancy at this point. We've been meeting for two years, and we have, we're here tonight to update you on our project and to ask for, to propose our first art bench location to you and to ask for your approval. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Kerry Gunter Seymour, who is one of our artists. And the other artist I also want to mention is Marcia Schubert. And these two are the, two people on the group that are artists. So Kerry's going to give the PowerPoint-y presentation.
My apologies for any misspellings or mispronunciations earlier. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, I'm an artist. I can't spell anything. So am I pushing something here to make this happen, or?
Is it forward arrow?
Ah, is it up?
We have help.
And they appear.
Thank you. So you can all see this? Is that, how that happens?
Well, council has also have a copy, should have a copy.
There we go.
There it is. Okay. So, we are the Art Bench Committee, is what we have named ourselves. And I love that we came after the essence of Athens, because we are basically tailgating on the essence of Athens, because we are also trying to bring some beauty to the Athens area, specifically along the Hawk Hocking Bike Path. As Donna mentioned, we've been working for about two years now, trying to organize ourselves, find the perfect artists to begin the project with, and begin fundraising efforts. And we feel like we're at that point. So we're happy to be here tonight and share with you. Yeah. Okay, so we have a mission statement. I don't know if any of you have had any time at all just been with this packet before tonight. Okay, so I'm not gonna bore you with all the reading and all that sort of stuff, but I think you can probably tell from the mission statement. And looking at these faces, many of them that you know. I know many of you, those of you who don't know me now, and these other extraordinary ladies that are here with me tonight, who have dedicated many hours of our time to bring together this project of providing a place for beauty and respite at several places along the bike path in Athens, Ohio, and even beyond. But we're concentrating here now. Our fiscal agent is the Athens Conservancy, so we have that all set up. Though we are spearheading this project, and believe me, we are very passionate and dedicated women, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that this is a community-based project. If our community is not involved in this project, it will not be successful. And so we want to, we want to make that perfectly clear. Okay, we want to get local businesses involved, not just for sponsorship and money, but to help fundraisers, to have them become involved in well, as well, and be as excited about it as we are. We have set up a selection process. We're gonna, there's gonna be twofold. So we're starting with the first, which is invitational. So this time round, we chose the artists, okay?
Cool.
The, we decided that we wanted to work with people that we knew we could count on, that knew how to do this work, people who knew about safety, who knew about safety standards, who knew about working with the kind of materials we would need to create industrial benches that could stand up to time, could stand up to graffiti, could stand up to, you know, people trying to beat them. We know a lot of the vandalism that happens around Athens and surrounding areas. So, we worked very hard and landed on two young men that we know that are excellent artists. Just for future information, we will be doing a submission process, and we will involve Athens County artists and allow them to submit their, their ideas for benches in the future. But for this very first bench, we have chosen Resolve Studios. And they are out of Marietta, Ohio. And I'm gonna move forward. And so we've been working with these men for over a year and a half now, a year and a half. We've made several visits to their studio in Marietta, which I might add, they are always open to anyone coming who would like to visit them. And during the process of building this bench, they are open for people coming and visiting and seeing what they're doing. And so during our time with them and them with us, we have spent some time looking for a site. And the site that we would love to use, with your approval, would be on the bike path, just off Armitage Road, as it circles around and go, one part of it goes to Little Fish Brewery, and the other part of it goes to West State Street Park. And I do have, it's right over here in the corner.
It's on the extension.
And there's a beautiful wetlands there.
Yeah.
And, and there's an absolutely perfect little patch there. Andrew Chickie's already been out with us to look, just to see if it's even feasible to put something like that there. We brought the artists there. You can see Jeff and, oh my gosh, Todd, thank you, standing there with Marcy and Donna and Roxanne. And we did a wonderful site view there, and it was, it was astounding to work with these guys and bring them in, because what happened was, they turned into artists and little boys, and they ran off. And they started seeing all these wonderful things that they wanted to include in the project, some of which were man-made, such as, you know, some of you may be aware of the bridge that you crossed to get to West State Street. And there's all those neat bolts and, and old wood and, and bent metal. And then there's that beautiful iron that's been patinaed for years and years from the railroad bridge that they fell in love with. And they said, oh, we need to incorporate all this into our artwork and make this part of the project. And we were like, yes, yes, yes. So we've spent a great deal of time with them, working through designs and talking with them. And I will reiterate, they are willing to talk with anyone who's interested in their project and would like to spend some time with them. This is the rendering that they came up with after we all spent our time together and made our decisions. And this is a rather loose rendering, but you can see the organics of it. We will have organic material as well as heavy metals. All of them are very permanent and lasting, as vandalism-proof as possible. Again, I reiterate, these are artists who know about safety requirements, they know about materials, they've done a lot of installation artwork, particularly in the Marietta and surrounding areas there. They're trustworthy, they have an excellent reputation, they come highly recommended. And so, let me take you on just a little tour of who they are. Here's Todd and Jeff in their studio space, and that is their logo for Resolve Studios. And if you go there, you will see that. And this is the bench that resides in front of the People's Bank Theater in Marietta, Ohio. And it, we went and sat and enjoyed, and they used lots of recycled materials, and they intend to do that with this project as well. And they'll recycle materials from our area, from their area. The other visuals I included for you, this is a piece that was created for the art exhibit, Flow, which Marcy Schubert was co-chair of. And they simply brought together all these materials that were found, and people were so fascinated about it, spent hours and hours and hours looking at this piece of art that had all kinds of nooks and pennies and things to do. These men are mega-talented. And what I, what I really loved was what's Todd's statement, and I know you've all had time to spend with it, that, "As I walk the Athens Bike Path, I cannot help but think this strip of blacktop does far more than serve as a connection of two or more places where you ride from one to the next. The bike path connects two worlds, one natural, the other man-made. The bike path is a causeway that allows one to..." The bike path is a causeway that allows one to reconnect with nature, if only for a little while."
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we'd like to do. We'd like to give people the opportunity to connect with nature in our city, in our county, in a beautiful way, on these beautiful benches. This is the first one. We've worked very hard to pull this together. We have this amazing sketch. We know what we want to do. We're ready to move forward with fundraising. We already have partners who are willing to fundraise with us. We know we're going to get this money and we know this bench is going to be felt. And what we need to know is perhaps it could be on this piece of property that we've found that seems to us to be perfect and could be a lovely way to send people out that direction, maybe visit Little Fish, maybe come to West State Street Park and beyond. So we're here tonight to ask for your assistance. These artists are prepared to assist with the installation of the piece and they have put together their own little packet that says what they need, their requirements, and Donna can give you more information about that because I know you're going to have a lot of questions about that. But if you have any questions concerning the artwork itself, or these two gentlemen, or Resolve Studios, or anything about any of us, I would be happy to field those questions. Kent.
Thank you. And thank you for the wonderful presentation. I do believe that my colleague on council had a comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You all know me. Personally, on a personal, just very humanness level, this is very gratifying to see a project that comes out of just going and traveling in other places can come back and morph into exactly what fits Athens. I think some of the things that need to be reemphasized is that, one, that you are fundraising the complete amount, except for maybe a small donation from Athens in term of bodies helping out or some money, but very small. Two, that the bench will then become the property of Athens because it will be on our property along the bike path. We won't need to do a right-of-way agreement or anything. It's the, the community's gift to Athens and Athens' gift to, to the community.
Yes.
And I think that those two things are really important to take home tonight and that what you're seeking is basically the, like the agreement that we did with the Arts West artists. You have been through the AMAC process.
Yes.
And the AMAC has signed off on this process and on this piece. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes, councilmember.
I, beautiful presentation, well done. I can tell a lot of work went into this, so I appreciate that. You said you visited the site with Andrew Chickie and I underst, what was his reaction to the site? Was he in support of the location?
He was, but if you would allow me to now turn it over to Donna because she actually physically met with him and she can give you exact onsite on the moment.
Thank you.
Follow.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
Thank you. Okay, so I met with Andy today. We had trouble getting our schedules together, but we went out there together today and we walked out to the site. And he, we had already had this, checked out with Andy Stone's office, Jessica Adine, worked with us probably eight to 12 months ago regarding the location. So we already knew that the city engineer's office was okay with the potential location. It wasn't in the middle of a power line or a right-of-way or anything like that. So Andy went out there with me, I showed him the site, he took some paint and he marked the general area. He said he had no problem with it. We talked about the orientation of the bench and how far off the bike path it will be, probably five to six feet off the path, just so it's not in anybody's way. And he had no problem with it. We talked about what we're going to expect of the city or we're hoping to expect of the city. And that would be, we would like, if possible, the city to do a little bit of leveling of the site. It's not, it's not exactly level, just slightly downhill or uphill, depending on how much you look at it. We also will need the city to pour a small concrete pad of freedom rebar and the artists will come out and install the bench and they'll actually oversee the pouring of the concrete and so on. We also wondered if possibly the city might be able to donate a tree. I know that you, the city's taken down a number of ash trees and I'm hoping that possibly one of the trees that you have to replant could be a tree that will be over this bench to provide this shade. So Andy liked the site and seemed very happy with it and told me I was welcome to tell you all that we were out there today.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
It's an awesome site. And if people think about it, it's overlooking the, the wetlands that I know a lot of people really enjoy. I mean, it's a beautiful site, so.
Thank you. It's up above the wetlands. It's almost, almost where the spur meets the existing older bike path, very close to the newish bridge that goes across the river to Route 682. And so it's a little bit elevated over the wetland area, so there's a really nice view of the wetland and there's this beautiful arc in the path, so it overlooks that. And it, it looks east, so it gazes to the east.
Thank you. Yes, councilmember.
And I just wanted to ask the administration what they thought of that, those expectations from the city, like being able to level that out and is that all, does all sound doable?
We can, we can handle that. That's, I think, in terms of, you know, what is being delivered versus what we can do with ground prep and concrete work, we can handle that.
Yes, mayor.
And the trees as well. We've got 390 bank trees and so I'm sure that we can find a tree or maybe two, but we can, we can, we can certainly handle that. I love this idea. I just have to tell you upfront, as I'm looking at this, I look at the, what's going to be the Frank Murphy Wetlands Preserve, which is the new bike path for Columbus Road, possibly in the future, assessing that for a site. That also has some high ground that looks down on what will be probably one of our, our best birding sites in the city of Athens. So I, you had me at hello with this. I like this.
I already have that, that one picked out as well. So, and the other, there's one other site in the city that we are thinking about and I'll just mention it. And that is around the community gardens. I don't know about you, but every time I go past the community gardens and I'm on my bike, I always have to stop and gaze. So beautiful. There's so many interesting things to look at. So another site that would, it's, it's another possible bench site that would also require a tree because there's not a lot of shade right there. But there's many, many places to put really wonderful benches.
I would also like to point out that this process that has come out of this group will serve as a model for other park benches, the bike benches, that, that could go on in the future. It sets out, you know, expectations and how to do fundraising and the expectations of the city and anybody donating a, a bench. And so it will be a great model for these other spaces and something that the community can move and move into and such.
Thank you. Councilman McGee, followed by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Councilman Butler. I would applaud you ladies. I think it's wonderful. It's really a wonderful bench and Ms. Goodman, I would certainly applaud you. I would just make one suggestion. Please bring some of your benches into town and I would suggest one by the courthouse and, and hit up the Athens County Bar Association to contribute to it because I think that we should definitely do it. And I, I think that you all are providing some inspiration that we really need. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pappy.
I just wanted to comment, the, the quality of the art and the organic nature of it totally is setting a, a bar for more benches to come and what other art projects that, that Athens has. And you need to take your hats off to, to, to providing that level of artistic quality. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
So this first bench, we are doing our own fundraising, but we're wondering if possible future benches, the city might consider putting in their art budget. I'm not sure if you even have an art budget, but it's a big job for us to do fundraising.
Sure.
And it would be really, really wonderful if the city is that interested in this, which it sounds like you are, if there's a possibility that you could consider partially funding, if not completely funding, some future benches.
And Mike, to help answer that, and again, future discussions would, would have to take place, but some of that could easily fall into arts, parks and recreation.
Okay.
So, but we'd want future discussions regarding that.
It, it could, remember Butler, but it's also something that we do budget for AMAC, the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. You know, I think this past year we've budgeted almost $15,000 into art projects, which has been murals and the wraps and things of that nature. So we can continue and will continue to budget for them. If I'm, I'm looking at this and if, is this correct, that this bench is going to be just south of $5,000, $4,950? So we're talking budgeting into AMAC, something similar to that, that cost. We're, I'm fine with exploring that.
Okay, great. Thank you. So what is the next step for council in terms of approval of this?
I, I think that, like we did with the West State Street process, we just accepted the recommendation of AMAC. So I would like, Kent would like, sorry.
Go ahead, you're fine. Go ahead, you're fine. No worries.
Whatever wording that we've gotten from AMAC to come forward, I would think that, and then just a general acceptance, right?
A motion, a motion of approval under other business items which could come forward. Wouldn't see any problem with it coming forward next week.
So what's?
I would think if, if administration is comfortable with that and has all the details that they need for it.
And AMAC has, I think AMAC has put forward their recommendation or they're going to
We can clarify.
This week. Right?
I believe their minutes indicate that they already have approved, if I'm understanding that I was provided a copy of the minutes. So I think we're there, I think we have the difference.
So I believe, I believe Donna, you were, Donna, you were at the meeting last month, is that correct? Yeah. My apologies, I wasn't there, but we were on recess.
So.
Sounds like little kids.
Then it would come forward at council next week?
Next Monday.
And if it were voted on and approved next week, then that's the final step and we can move forward?
Yes.
Great. We have some grants we're ready to submit, so that's, that would be great if it did get approved soon.
Okay. And can you mention the fundraiser?
Oh.
For Little Fish?
Yes. Kerry?
A little free advertising here. Sorry.
We really are a committee. We all have, we all bring certain gifts and skill sets, so we do tag team up. Our very first fundraising event is, is set up, we didn't want to move forward without knowing how all of you felt about our project. However, it will be held at Little Fish. We are going to do some chalk painting and it'll be an afternoon of painting, poetry, music and story. And so we're partnering with the Women of Appalachia Project, which some of you may know is near and dear to me. And so we will provide an essence of an afternoon of, of just total sensibilities. And these chalk paintings are going to be made sort of like flags. And for anyone who would like to, we will come back together with the art that's made that day and make a flag that will be held up on the day that we dedicate the first bench. And this is going to be an afternoon for a set fee, which is not a large fee, but it's mostly to get the word out there for people to know what's happening. We also have a new Facebook page, which went up about two weeks ago, a very quiet launch of a Facebook page, which already has 75 friends. When we make it official, I imagine that to triple or quadruple within a week or two. And just even grassroots fundraising from the Facebook page, I think will be very successful. So we look to do a lot of partnering and we've already had a lot of people reach out to us. And this has all been under the radar.
What's the name of the Facebook page?
The Art Bench Project.
All right.
And you'll see the logo that you see on the front of your packet.
Okay.
And that will represent us. And when you see that, you'll know that that is one of our projects.
Art Bend Project, there are many, there are many different cities. I'll put in Athens, right?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Yep. And again, we'd like to thank you so much for taking the time to put us on your schedule tonight.
Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation. That's it.
Actually, September 24th is this wonderful event that we're holding, so we'd love to have you all come and pay with us and drink a little beer.
What is it?
September 24th. Thank you. Moving forward, we have a discussion this evening regarding Water Tap on Peach Ridge Road. There was a request that our Public Works Director, Mr. Stone, received regarding this assistance. There was email dialogue and there's a request for the administration and council to move forward to support this prop, this project, which I believe is on private property. Trying to see some of the details here. Request for Water Tap, for New House Project. And the administration is aware of this as well. Any thoughts, discussions?
You know, I, I believe you received an email from the Director of Engineering and Public Works and
Correct.
What his opinion in reading ORC 743.12 through 743.14, that the administration has the authority to, to do this, but he also felt that it's probably prudent for council to have a, put together an ordinance authorizing this resident. The resident will be paying for the extension up to the property itself. City water is served. The other parcels, the other houses that were built in that area, this was one undeveloped parcel. And so it would just be providing water.
So this is at the end of Old Peach Ridge?
Yeah.
Because the other Peach Ridge is across the highway and, and across the bridge.
And he believes this is the last buildable lot that would be impacted. And so he actually was referencing some, ordinance some years back.
This is out of, this is out of the city.
Well, I, I realize that that's it, but if you're going to go on Peach Ridge, you're talking about crossing the bridge. There's nobody across the bridge and it has water.
Right. Our, our system runs in front of their lot.
On Peach Ridge?
Yeah. At the intersection of Collins and Peach Ridge Road.
There was a development that went in a few years back and the city provided water. And this was the last lot within that development.
So this side of 33?
No.
The other side?
No, Collins is on the other side.
We provide water to
North Point?
Past that.
Right.
Keep going.
We provide water to North Point? No, that's Lee Axe.
Well, Collins Road is, is up over the bump and, and probably another 200 yards out there on the left.
So farther out on the left? When you come across the bridge, it's to the left?
Right. Right. Remember Cottis was saying you go up over that bump and Collins is back in that direction. There's other areas where we
So we have a water line that crosses the highway there somewhere, obviously, or comes across the bridge? Do you know, Service Safety Director?
I, I, it does cross the highway, but I'm, I don't know that it's hung on the bridge.
Okay.
And
The law director weighed in on this too.
Well, historically, you know, if I can, if I can go back 45 years, before the highway was there, Peach Ridge just went straight out.
Correct.
So
Correct.
They probably kept that water line underneath US 33. Is that, is that feasible?
Or slung under the bridge, one or the other. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
That long? That'd be crazy.
This is also, I mean, this lot, the Department of Health has approved a septic system for this lot, so it's not on city sewer, but everything out there is on septic.
Councilmember McGee.
Yes, this is a side topic, but I've raised on several occasions my concern for the safety of students who cross the bridge to go over to Long Hill and walk on the, that area. And I've been told that it's outside city limits, so the city, of course, can't do anything to protect the safety of its citizens. And I'm a little distressed that we would instead be providing water to people outside the city limits and yet at the same time use an excuse that we have no power to do anything that would help a situation that I consider extremely dangerous when those students are walking on that, that side road there. And I just want to bring it to the administration's attention that if we're doing this kind of thing going outside the city limits, then I think there's a real question as to the strength of an argument that we have no authority or any power whatsoever to do something that protects our citizens because I, I think we really need to do something. Somebody's going to get a hit by a car one of these days, especially, I believe, with the new traffic that we'll be experiencing from the roundabout. So that's my concern and I So that's my concern, and I hope you'll take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
They've pulled it up on the map, we're looking at, this is, this is quite a distance away from our city limit.
The water main has been in place there, and he even indicated to that that decades ago, so the water runs in front of his property, we view it, he will be paying the 20% out of city rates for this.
So we have quite a few customers out there.
Correct.
But this is the last buildable lot, as identified by the city engineer.
So it's a historical artifact from previous administrations that decided to pull it out, that part, for whatever reason.
We could get in the Wayback Machine.
The Wayback Machine.
We'll find out. Set the dial, sure.
Any other questions or comments? Moving forward with the county sewer corridor, the administration has some updates. I know that my colleague on council, Councilmember Fall, worked extensively as well in the past, working with the county and the city, looking at this agreement to potentially move forward with this extension to the corridor of our sewer system. As you recall, we made extensive improvements to our city sewer system a few years back, invested millions of dollars in this project, and it's been working efficiently and effectively now. We continue to receive updates, but Mayor's Office, I think, has some information regarding this potential opportunity to move forward.
You originally passed an ordinance allowing us to enter into this agreement. The agreement has never been signed because we had to negotiate rates and what have you. So our most recent discussion wound up, and you should have received in your box, your virtual box there, the new agreement with the strike-throughs and the different changes from a meeting that we just had regarding...
It's in our, it's part of our agenda.
No, I said it about 6:30.
I received it in an email, I can forward it right now to council.
Well, I have one here with strikeouts, I don't know if it's the current one though.
Should be red and blue.
That should, that's the current one.
Red and blue.
That has the strikeouts, that was information just recently added in our conversations with...
No, no, it's, it's pretty...
Is it in a shared Google Drive?
I know, I'm reading it too.
Could you, could you just talk a little bit about what the changes were?
Yeah, one of the things we had to do is negotiate the rate with the, for the, the city shall invoice the county at a rate of 70% of its current user sewage rate for the sewage treatment based upon the cumulative portable water flow on a monthly basis. Another thing that we're going to be tracking is INI, which is...
Infiltration.
Thank you. It's water loss.
Yes.
But this is a brand-new system, and so it's not anticipated. However, one of the things that we looked at closely, since we're not providing water out in that area, we are receiving the, we'll be receiving sewage, obviously, with the sewer line, is we'll be monitoring at three tie-in points into the city, and what we'll be monitoring is the water use that's going on in that area on a quarterly basis.
We decide quarterly.
And what we're receiving, we'll also be looking at, at any uptick in the intensity of the sewage that we're receiving. And what will happen is, is if we see a discrepancy of 8%, there ends up becoming essentially kind of a surcharge or penalty charge that comes into place, and it can increase at a half a percent a year if it continues or if it goes up, and so we've built that in. But that penalty, what the plan is, is to kind of keep, hold that, hold it in escrow, hold it in account, and then that can be used for corrective actions in fixing whatever the INI problem is. So we're not truly penalizing, we're ensuring that we're able to hold reserves that can be used for rectifying any increase in INI in the new system as it moves forward.
The usage, the equivalent councils, that we spend a lot of time on that remains the same. You have an updated map that now reflects like the country club, areas, the areas that they had added to it.
So this map at the end is updated?
And, yes. The county is preparing to move forward with their public hearings, the next step in their process. They are also obligated funds under federal loans, similar to what we work with, and so they are indeed requesting adoption of these modifications, so that they can get their public hearing scheduled. They're under the federal law, which expires September 30th, in order to try to obtain their greatest rate moving forward, so, similar to what we've talked about with our water treatment plan.
So we'll have to suspend this in order for them to get this through in time.
Thank you. Comments from Councilmember Fall?
Thank you. A little background, I think, is in order, because it has been such a long process. This was put forward, this has been talked about in our last comprehensive plan, some of these issues, transentially. But I think it's important for people to understand that it's sewer, not water, that the county is taking on all responsibility for passing, billing, those sort of things. It's their pony to go out and do these public hearings. Basically, we are an entity that's sitting in the background that said, this makes sense for the city, it's, Andy Stone has put forward that it actually helps our city system function better, and they're doing all the groundwork and taking on all responsibility, and if it, they get to stand in their public hearings, and we don't have to, which is awesome. So I think that that sort of background is important. We're acting as maybe like a big, like a good neighbor, I think is, is part of it. Andy spent a lot of time working with Lee Axe, developing a model legislation contract for this process, because Lee Axe sometimes is not the easiest entity to work with, so.
So I have a question on the map. When you think of sewage and issues with sewage, you know, we're, we know that they're having difficulties with their septic systems out there, this is one of the reasons they they want to put in sewer lines and whatnot. And when you look at the map, the red or pink, there's pieces that butt up against our city limits. So I'm just kind of thinking of environmental issues or quality issues that way. I'm thinking that these areas are more wooded fields, not as developed, that the blue areas are what are more developed, and this is future outgrowth is the red areas. So I just want to make sure that, that the public understands that the areas they're going for currently are areas that are already developed, currently have septic, needing to upgrade, and all those kinds of things. And then I think another comment for historical purposes is the EPA has been talking to Athens County Government for quite some time about their concerns, just like they have in the city of Athens, we are working on major sewer lines currently, but they've been working, the EPA has been talking to them about their concerns with septic and groundwater and all those things.
They're under the gun, to tell you the truth.
Yeah, they really are.
Through this process, I remember when Larry Payne came here, and, oh my God, I just read him the riot act, sorry, Larry. One of the things that we really struggled through with the county is to ensure that it, this sewage proposal only serves what is there. My concern and the city administration and Paul Logue's concern was at the starting point, the county was like, well, we want this and this and this, because we want to, you know, do these developments, but our line was, we're not going to provide sewer for these sort of areas, because one, they are not, they don't have septic, they don't have houses on them, and we're not interested in help in doing out-of-city development that potentially could be a drag on our city taxes. And that was, for me, the bargaining line that I would not move off, and the county came to our point. So the county has moved a lot on this, so I think it's like a win-win all around.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other comments? Administration?
You know, to that, to that point, let me read this, because I think this is important, and it kind of highlights what Member Fall was just mentioning, and I think is a matter alluded to by several of you. Under Section 4, Service Area, Exhibit A that you were just referring to includes up to 1,500 total equivalent single-family units, of which no more than 4% will be commercial and no more than 1% will be industrial ESFUs. These percentages shall be based upon the county auditor's parcel identifications. Any new resident, any new non-resident taps beyond the initial design may be reviewed by the city in compliance with these percentages. Any additional taps beyond the 1,500 ESFUs must be subject to a separate future agreement between the county and the city. New taps are subject to a city capacity fee, capacity fee at the current city fee structure, in effect at the time of the tap, the current, currently $3,000 per ESFU, which the county shall collect and pay the 70% revenue collected with the capacity fee and the city. No connections to the system shall be made on the force main, providing flow to the city's system unless the flow is independently monitored, so this is speaking to additional monitoring of this for accountancy, so, also worth mentioning.
Thank you. There's no more further comments, questions? Thank you. Presidentizer, that concludes this committee.
I'll move on to Planning and Development Committee with Councilmember Fall, Chair.
Thank you. The first agenda is the Disabilities Commission. The administration has a proposal to conjugate the people, the members.
Reconfigure?
Conjugate. It's a fishing term. Where you rejigger your conjugation. It is 9:00 in the evening, people are getting tired. Anyway, can you bring forward your proposal?
I...
It was to increase the number of voting members in the Disability Commission. Chris is tracking, taking you...
I believe to 11. Right, and we have talked about this before, a long time ago before our break, our recess. And I think that this will help with, with the organizational and business meetings with the Disability Commission.
This also cleans up kind of a disconnect between their bylaws, which speaks to 11, but the ordinance was silent to, or if anything, it said 9, one or the other. It just brings their bylaws into alignment with the ordinance.
Bring it up to speed, I think. Any questions on this?
I do just want the record to note, as the City Council Commissioner for the Disabilities Commission, I have not received any notice from any member of the commission as to this, nor have I received any recent notice of any meetings, so I do want to make that clear that if they're asking City Council to increase the members, then I suppose at least, out of courtesy, they should at least send us an email that would indicate exactly what they're asking.
The Commission on Disabilities?
Yes, yes.
Don't you serve as a member?
I do serve as a member, that's what I'm indicating, that I have not received this notice. I've been checking my email for some reason.
We talked about it before break, so...
I understand that, but...
Right, so the, so maybe reviewing the minutes for it?
Are you receiving since then minutes and notifications of the regular, of their monthly meetings?
Not since June, I haven't received anything.
One went out today, they're meeting, was it Wednesday or Thursday this week? So I'll make sure, something's occurred here, I think.
That would be appropriate, thank you.
Okay. I apologize for that.
So going forward, you will be on...
Thank you.
Thank you. Sometimes these things get overlooked.
Sometimes.
And maybe we should just, as a side, make sure that all the liaisons on council know which commissions they're kind of overlooking and that sort of stuff, so we know that whether we're missing it or not, like, we have to find a new council person to go on to the sustainability at some point, because Jennifer was the liaison for it. So I think, make sure that you're, like, I have a spreadsheet, so I'll let you know. And so we make sure that we're all...
Who does the minutes for the Disability Commission? A member of their own commission.
Right, I think it's Laura Edge is the one who, she's also the chair, who takes the minutes.
We'll get, we'll get people talking and talking.
Thank you.
Identify the Sunshine Commission.
You know, I, just to throw this out there, Member McGee, I think it might have been in your favor to reach out to Laura Edge, the Chair of the Commission, and ask for those minutes, or anything else, if you all of a sudden were dropping off, dropped off the radar for that in particular.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, so that will come forward, I'm going to. And last on our agenda is parking amendments. This isn't the parking permit model experimental permitting, this is looking at changing our ordinances and our language in the code to update, because now we're not necessarily talking about parking meters, we're talking about pay centers and those sort of languages. This will update the code for all that language, because now we're going into the future with these. And I think that will help, yeah, Park Mobile, I think that will help in some of the issues that have come up with the changeover of parking meters versus Park Mobile. Signage will be changed and those sort of things through this amendment.
It basically helps with enforcement as well.
So it provides clearer language for signage and enforcement.
Is there something on paper already?
Yeah, there's on your...
There's a draft ordinance on your drive.
On your drive. There's the amendment with all the yellow, so it's basically changing, instead of saying parking meters, it says like a parking, pay parking spaces and those sort of things, so.
We anticipate bringing forward some more code changes to you that are kind of simple and clean-up language in the future.
And that was something Jennifer Cochrane was concerned about, and she followed up a lot on, so I'm glad that her work is continuing, so. Patrick?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention on the parking garage, I've noticed, since I'm one of these people that through my office, I have a monthly payment and I have a reserved spot, I've noticed that quite often the lowered levels of the parking garage are not being used, and those are times, oftentimes, when it's high use in the rest, and I've noticed that visitors to Athens or citizens can't find parking spaces in the parking garage occasionally, and I just would suggest that perhaps, even though it kind of hurts my best interest of having a open space, I would ask the city to maybe consider seeing if there could be an alternative to offering some of these spaces in the evenings or the weekends, spaces that are reserved for people, that would open up additional spots.
You're referring to the lease spaces?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the, I see the same thing, especially during the summer, where I think a lot of likely students are leasing some of these spaces, and then they're gone for the summer, and so that space is just sitting there not being utilized. We could explore some things, Member McGee, I mean, one thing that we worked really hard at when I was on council was the vendor spaces, because I often scratched my head too, wondering why this space is just sitting here and no one's in it, yet it's been leased by somebody, and I believe we put language in, requiring them to be there for a certain, so many days a week or a percentage of the month, I don't remember what it was, but we can, we could explore some different options along those lines, but if someone is leasing it, they're leasing it, but we, we could look at other practices.
I understand the city makes revenue off of it, but I think there's that second issue, which is freeing up parking spaces in Athens, which... issue, which is freeing up parking spaces in Athens, which is a dreadful problem, and again, I would applaud any efforts that could be made, even though, again, it might impair some of our rights to, to, you know, have it 24 hours, I think it would open up a lot.
Yeah, we can certainly, you know, City Planner Paul Logue is, is doing a parking assessment, a large parking study, it's underway right now as it's moving forward, and I think that this is going to be a significant portion of the comprehensive plan moving forward, but maybe we can, yeah, this, this will either be a significant portion, we can get it into the comprehensive planning, or maybe something out of the study, we can augment it, because I think the parking garage is being looked at to a degree within the study. I think most of it, though, is taking place on the streets for the parking study, to include loading zones. That's another area where, I know we're going off topic just a tad, but we are talking about parking, and that is the loading zones, and do loading zones need to be marked from 7:00 a.m. or whatever the beginning point is to 2:00 p.m., which can interfere with people wanting to go to a restaurant in the uptown area over the noon hour or something for lunch, so, yeah, we're, we're looking at a lot of parking issues, parking is...
Well, thank you for examining that.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, everyone, we'll consider the meeting adjourned at 9:14 p.m., we'll see you all next Monday night.